Bill forty-four of the Ontario Ministry of Education proclaimed that on January first, nineteen sixty-nine, the five municipalities of Ancaster, Dundas, Flambeau, including Waterdown, Stony Creek, and Glenbrook would amalgamate their fourteen boards of education to become the Wentworth County Board of Education. Twenty-eight years later, Ontario Government Bill one oh four, the Fewer School Boards Act, declared that on January first, nineteen ninety-eight, the Wentworth County Board of Education, along with the Hamilton Public Board of Education, would cease to exist. On that date, legislation creates Ontario English Language Public District School Board Number twenty-one, the Hamilton-Wentworth Board of Education. Ian Hendry was the first chairman of the Wentworth County Board. He remembers the beginning as a very positive experience.
At that time, you have to appreciate that here were, you know, fourteen, for most part strangers, getting together to, to form a board and so one of the, I guess, one of the first achievements was to sort of wheel this group into a cohesive working team.
Doctor Jean Beck was a trustee in Dundas before the formation of the Wentworth Board. She too looks back on the early days.
The great differences that began to appear between communities and what various communities represented by their trustees felt important. Rural ones wanted their tiny schools kept. And we had a hard time sometimes trying to close them.
Anne Slote, who is still active in local politics, was also on the first Wentworth County Board.
And then, of course, there was always a bit of rivalry between sort of Stony Creek and Ancaster and Flambeau and, and that always added a little spice to the, to the, to the stew in the board office, you know, somebody was getting something that somebody else didn't get.
Lloyd Kirkpatrick, a teacher, principal, and superintendent with the Wentworth Board, now retired, remembers being interviewed at the Wentworth County Courthouse.
Well, I guess my, my first impressions of the early board would, would involve me going to, I believe it was the Wentworth County Courthouse for an interview as a potential I threw my name in just to, to try to see what would happen. At the time, I was thirty-five or thirty-six years old and I really didn't think there was going to be too much opportunity and, and during the course of the interview, a couple of things happened that made me think that there was no, certainly going to be no chance for me. One of the new superintendents said to me, "Mr. Kirkpatrick, on what page number would you expect to find such and such in the Education Act?" And I thought for a moment and I said to the superintendent, "Mr. so-and-so," and I won't use his name, "if I thought it was important for me to know what page number that appeared in the Education Act, I don't think I would have even come for the interview."
My feeling at the time was that, well, the first thing I have to mention to you is that I was truly shattered to receive the chairmanship because I got in by a mere six votes and I was the only one who had undergone a first-time election, as it were. And so when they elected me chairman, I, I was really astounded out of my mind. So that, you know, I felt that, you know, that there was no need for me to, to make great speeches because frankly, they'd all had lots of experience as board members so that, as, I may have said something along the lines of, "Well, we've got a, a big job of work to do, so let's get at it," something of that sort, but it would be very, very brief. As well, the courthouse, of course, they had an ideal meeting room and it was, it used the same room as the county council, as I recall it, so that they, they had all the desks and tables there that you would require and so we, our first few meetings were very, very easy and very, you know, and very delightful surroundings. So once we got settled, of course, one of the main tasks we had was hiring the people to the various positions, primarily the Director of Education. And so we, we placed our ads in the usual places and we got a whole host of replies and from these replies, we sorted out about four for what I refer to as the short leet, which is a Scottish term in these circumstances, where you have a short list of people. And so from the, the short leet, we chose Lloyd Mumford, you know, and, and he came aboard very quickly and we had the benefit of his advice.
Throughout its lifespan, the Wentworth Board tended to chart its own course. Current Director Alan Greenberg.
It was bringing five municipalities together with the fourteen school boards that represented those five municipalities into one organization and making the whole thing stick together. If you think about it, that's almost an impossible task and yet it was managed with, in retrospect, relative ease in the space of nineteen seventy-nine through, nineteen sixty-nine, rather, through about nineteen seventy-two, as the organization really began to, to thrive.
Staff were brought together from schools in the over forty towns and villages of Wentworth County, from the large towns of Stony Creek, Ancaster, Dundas, and Waterdown, from the smaller centers of Wynona and Mount Hope, and from the villages such as Carlisle, A geographically widespread county began to coalesce into a strong education community. Paul Challen, a student himself in the Stony Creek Salt Fleet Schools, returned to teach history in Wentworth County.
And I, I kept hearing that there was going to be this amalgamation with the, all the other schools of Wentworth County, including Dundas and Waterdown, you know, people of that type. And I knew some of the teachers there through sports and some of the students. Well, when I came back in nineteen sixty-nine, seventy, back to Salt Fleet again, and the board was undergoing its first year in, in real operation, I was amazed at how, how big we were geographically. I mean, you know, just the idea of going up to a place like Sheffield, you know, from Wynona, from Stony Creek, that's a, that's a long way and you have to travel, of course, through Hamilton if you don't want to. Of course, you can go up through Glenbrook, which is much nicer, obviously. We went to a PD day at Ancaster High, had no idea in those days that I'd be teaching at Ancaster High, but the enormous size of the place and the enormous auditorium packed in there with, oh, what, about nine hundred, I think it was more like nine hundred and eighty-one people in those days, but just, just an enormous number of people. And I've said this before, but I'll...
Grace Smith, former teacher, consultant, and elementary principal.
It took time and they realized that and they brought us together as five areas. Now, it, there were certainly growing pains in that, but I think we did it to have a functional area that was united under curriculum, but it allowed still the areas to service their school, or the schools to service the areas they were in their communities. And I think they also, what was really critical were the PA days that brought all the teachers from across the secondary and elementary when that happened. It was something that was hard to bring under control initially, as far as getting teachers to stop and listen to your speakers and so on, but they needed that time for camaraderie and to feel they were part of a system.
The lockout strike of the secondary teachers in nineteen seventy-eight made a strong impression on many board people.
One of the earliest recollections that I have is the nineteen seventy-eight lockout strike scenario that developed and I can certainly recall being assigned to, as a superintendent of schools, to go down to Wynona High School to, I guess, sort out the circumstances in that building, only to stand up when it was my turn to stand up and identify myself and not be able to remember what my name actually was or what my title was. So you're left standing on a chair in front of an examination room full of about two-hundred and fifty students, trying to remember who you are and what your, what your title is and that was certainly an introduction to the realities of being in a, in a supervisory role. There are some other elements though, too, as we did come out of that lockout and, and strike bitterness, I think, very well.
I think one of the main events and one of the most unpleasant one was nineteen seventy-eight with the work-to-rule and the subsequent lockout and, and in fact, there had been a couple of years of very difficult negotiations that led up to that situation and as unpleasant as it was, it was highly significant and fortunately was the only strike and lockout that we, we've had in the, in the history of Wentworth County.
Well, probably the most significant event that comes to my mind immediately was in nineteen seventy-eight when there was a difference of opinion between the teachers and the trustees and it ultimately ended up in a work-to-rule campaign and eventually into a, a strike. This happened just towards the end of the school year and there was a lot of consternation about what impact this was going to have on the promotion of the students, but happily it did get settled and I don't think the students were hurt too badly, but it still stands out in my memory as a, a very significant event and actually probably a bit of a low point in, in my career.
The teaching memories, the strike has to stand out in nineteen seventy-eight. It just is part of our history. It was a long time in coming from our point of view, maybe from the boards as well. There was a different set of board members on then, but what stands out is, is how hard it was for all of us initially, but then also the fun that came out of that and, and the closeness and the collegiality of the teaching staff especially and the people who supported us. So it's not a popular memory, but it's very much a part of the memory of all those of us who were around in those years and working for this board.
There were several significant changes for the Wentworth Board and its people as new schools were built or closed and offices were set up.
Very profoundly. As you, as you move along, though, in, in various areas, perhaps the elements of moving the board office from James Street in, in Hamilton here into the, the heart of Ancaster and utilizing a school which was closed for the purpose of a board office shows the, the kind of, I guess perseverance the board showed in, in trying to establish its own identity. Right from the start, when you're bringing that many, that many municipalities or predecessor boards together, there's a real difficulty in trying to, to gain a sense of personal identity and having our own board office in Ancaster as opposed to being on a few floors in a building in Hamilton really had a lot to do with that. There, there are other elements, too. As, as we move along in, in the middle of the nineteen eighties and further on, we began to build some schools and that was something that hadn't happened during the first few years of the, the board's existence. And if we went down the list of schools that this board wound up building, you could look back to Billy Green as perhaps being one of the very first that the, the board actually built, Janet Lee in the same area of Heritage Green Community in the Stony Creek section above the Escarpment. We could also look in, in very recent terms to that community also gaining the advantage of a brand-new Salt Fleet District High School. On the western side, as we would always refer to it, the western side of the county, you'd, you'd look at new school facilities like Balaclava and that's a, that's a school that the board built all out of its, entirely out of its own resources, not something that's done very frequently. Similarly, Milgrove had a major addition added to it and we'd also look at Waterdown District High School as, as a replacement school that was provided during the, the late eighties, early nineties. So from, from any perspective that you'd want to examine this board's story, from the, the issue of building schools and building the sense of community as a result of that features very, very large indeed.
The closure of Dundas District High School, I think it was nineteen eighty-two, and there were a couple of years that the writing was on the wall, so to speak. I taught there at the time, the students, staff, the whole community was very emotionally attached to that school and the fight to save it was a very intense one and I think a number of us, while we've all gone on with our lives and, and been happy in other places, have never really gotten over the loss of that school. Well, went for District Thirty-six was establishing a district office in nineteen eighty-seven, I think it was. That was a big change for us and it changed the way that, it made us more like a business, better able to represent the membership and I think better able to work with the board and the administration as well from a, from a central point. The social contract was certainly a significant milestone. We were lucky in Wentworth in a way, efforts by trustees and administration and federation and all the staff, we more or less got through it unscathed compared to some other jurisdictions, ended up dealing with it. In fact, some of them are still dealing with it now and we have it behind us. Certainly the extension of funding to the separate school system was a significant part of our history in Wentworth. The loss of Wynona High School created all sorts of problems and that eventually led to the negotiations with the Hamilton Board regarding Sherwood and I know personally at the time, I didn't think the board was making the right move. I was afraid that it would play into the hands of the government who had, over the years, talked about amalgamating Hamilton and Wentworth. I don't know whether it really did or not, but certainly it did create its own problems and, but once the board had decided to do it, I, I think that we were able to work out with the Hamilton Board the very best scenario for the students and the staff and all in all, the actual teaching of our students in the Hamilton system for those years seemed to have worked out.
One thing I don't think we can ever overlook is the trauma caused by the Bill Thirty requirements for us to transfer Wynona High School to the Hamilton-Wentworth Roman Catholic Separate School Board. We went through a, a major set of, of difficulties with, with that particular one, including a, a provincial arbitration panel in, in a sense, in a tribunal setting that still resulted in our having to transfer the building, but at the same time, had us move a number of our students off into Orchard Park and one perhaps less than, in, in the long-term pleasant outcome, having about two, two to three hundred of our students head over into Sherwood Secondary School in Hamilton. And that probably more than any single factor was the start of the, the kind of pressure for us to, to blend the two boards because it became very apparent that students at Sherwood were a possibility and if that was the case, then students in other Hamilton schools from the Wentworth areas also became a possibility. We could look to a, a number of, of other elements, too, but perhaps the one that would bring the, the most pride to us, I think collectively over that period of time, is the fact that despite pressures repeatedly for school board amalgamation to occur, this board built, forged in fact, a separate identity that very strongly resisted any mandatory bringing together of, of the two boards and it took a, a very determined government effort that, that dealt with school board amalgamations across the entire province before that actually occurred. I think we can all be pretty proud of that as part of our story.
Most important to Wentworth County Board teachers, administrators, and trustees is the sense that the county board established and maintained a high academic standard and worked with consistently professional excellence.
...on the board and I think the board has carefully hired superintendents over the years and I think these people have attributed a great deal. We've promoted our best and we've got, I think, some of the best from the outside and they have certainly bought about most of the accomplishments, big accomplishments that the board does, but it's the...
Over the last twenty-seven years, I think the education in Wentworth County is, is, I would go so far as to say probably second to none in public education. I think, I think we do a good job. I think we have an incredibly dedicated and committed staff. I can be cynical and say more than we probably deserve, but I believe that and I, I don't think that you could ever pay, certainly the people that I've worked with, the hours, the caring that they put in to their jobs.
But I think the one resource that we have in, in Stony Creek and in all of Wentworth County is the level of professionals, teachers that we have. I just, I can't say enough about our teachers. I think that we are second to none when I see how our teachers have managed throughout these years to do the tremendous job that they've done. I don't think Wentworth County needs to take a second place to anyone.
...all together, but I think another thing that we maintained as far as a function of the board, which I feel was very important when you look at education, was the arts in Wentworth County. From my, I remember from my own schooling, it was promoted, but I really feel that as we grew, we didn't have such lavish auditoriums as other boards had and all the equipment such as lighting and staging and all the things. And in fact, we couldn't really have the money to bring in outside groups to perform. My clear recollection is of teachers writing scripts. Stuart Jeffries was really a promoter of this. Teachers gave up their time to sew costumes, do scenery, and become the actors and we put on productions that went across this county. I remember it was Wizard of Oz was one, Cinderella was another. There were, there were quite a few of them. It took a lot of time, it took a lot of energy, but not the money. But our children gained a great deal from that, I think, and our schools. The other things I think we promoted were things like Music Fest. That was something that was in each area for the longest time. It went through Quanis Board initially, the Quanis Club, and then they ended up doing our own in the county. And then Marion McGugan put together a phenomenal children's choir, I think that was just renowned and we all, teachers, students, parents, everybody got enjoyment from that. So those were, I think, very special items that we did with this board.
But it's the other things that count, too, in the schools, I think, you know, graduations, the kind of musicals the schools put on, that I have seen over the years, that are big accomplishments, not by the board maybe, but perhaps by the fact that the board was able to allow these kind of things to happen. And I, I was, I've been always thrilled with this. This is the big thing about being a trustee. It's not being at these meetings, it's not doing those things, but seeing the things that happen. I take a lot of pride in Balaclava, of course.
One of the things that I think the board became well-known for was its work in special education. And prior to nineteen sixty-nine, we really didn't have the opportunities to do very much for students in this area because in most cases, the, the district boards were too small and didn't have the personnel or the facilities to be able to deal with it. When we became a county board of education, this opened up many more opportunities and with some of the expertise that we were able to bring into the county, special education really started to develop and I think we really did an excellent job for the students who were having some difficulties either with learning or physical disabilities.
To be in the consultant's role when we pulled special ed, which was a separate item on most boards, and curriculum program, whatever, together under one umbrella. And I think it serviced more children and more teachers and I think it had a better direction because it wasn't fragmented and I think teachers didn't feel pulled in so many directions then.
Glenwood School has successfully met the needs of physically and mentally challenged students since nineteen seventy-five. Mark McRobert was principal of Glenwood from its inception until nineteen ninety-four.
Glenwood School was established back in nineteen seventy-five, basically at the request of the parents of the western end of the Wentworth County. It became known as Glenwood because that was the name of the old building on the Brock Road that was turned into the new school. And Glenwood has remained with the school for all its time that it has operated. It soon became obvious that the old building we had occupied was no longer big enough for the students that we had. We had a portable, but we were overflowing that too and we needed to look for a larger building. In the meantime, our program had developed so that the students had a full range of academic programs and social skills, life skills, and work in the community. They went skiing, they went swimming, they went bowling, we camped, we visited theaters, we shopped in Toronto, all of these activities developing skills to take our place in the Went into acquiring the new building, which was the old Maple Lane School in Ancaster.
Public question period. End of season, Chairman. Item number four, approval of minutes of August fifth, what is your wish? Moved by Mr. Davis.
Bruce Wallace is the chairperson of the board as it reaches the end of nineteen ninety-seven.
All those in favor? That is unanimous? Any business arising from those minutes? Item number six, approve of the agenda. Moved by Mrs. Coalition, seconded by Mr. Duncan.
When I first became a trustee thirteen years ago, looked upon Wentworth, I think most people did, as basically a rural board. And I think in the time I had been on this board, the past thirteen years, this board has evolved from a board that was perhaps perceived as a board in the shadow of a, a larger board, its neighbor, to a board that can stand alone, be proud of its accomplishments not only by its students, but by its staff. And in terms of recognition across the province, people know where Wentworth is and what Wentworth does.
does. As the last chairman of the Wentworth County Board, I guess the one thing I would like to leave with everyone is my sincere thanks to everyone who has been a part of the Wentworth County Board of Education, from trustee to staff to students to parents. We are unique, we are important. You've done a fantastic job, all of you, and I know the good things of Wentworth will be our heritage that we continue to take forward with the new board.